Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed in the front on the screens. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link, then select Board of Education, and then Board Doc's Agenda to select tonight's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board tonight, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.05. Please state the agenda item you're referring to at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a signup sheet located at the back of the room on the table. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Here.
Mr. Velarde?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mr. Bird and Mrs. Davidson wrap up.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.01, to approve the minutes as read of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, July 9, 2018. Does anyone have questions or comments about the minutes on the board? Okay, we don't normally officially approve the minutes, but we do take board comments and suggestions. Moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Back-to-School Update.
Thank you, President Cotter, members of the board. So just a quick, so if anybody noticed, Thursday, the students come back. So if you weren't paying attention, Carrie, that makes me nervous when you look like that. Students will be back. So those of us who commute to work, remember that, because the buses will be on the road Thursday morning, and if you get caught behind one, it's on you. And just, so some of the things that have been going on as we got ready, you know, summer goes by quickly, lots of things happen. As you'll see tonight, our transportation routes are ready to go. Buses have passed inspection, I've been told, so I think we're good there. Our van program is almost ready to go. We're very close, I think we have two vans we're waiting on. I see the bus people waving and nodding at me. So that's our new program. You won't see so many Tristar vehicles on the road anymore. We've taken that on our own roof, and so that program will be out with their cool decals. We'll be excited for that new program. Summer cleaning projects are done. We have a couple capital improvement projects still going out there, but nothing that'll impact instruction. I'm hoping, how are we in the walk-in refrigerators at North? We're good to go there? North is done? That was a big project, so that's good to know. We had new teacher induction last week on Thursday and Friday, right, Dr. Hopkins? Forty-four new teachers. Bought them on in, got them excited, they're ready to go. Good-looking bunch, very bright bunch of people. We're very excited. A variety of experiences coming, which we think can add value to the district. Many of our new student orientation programs are done, and the scheduled pickup nights are done, so all that's in the background. And I noticed about two weeks ago, lots more young people on the roads in the morning, because it was fall sports. So you saw a lot of kids on bikes and walking to schools for fall sports, so it's kind of a warm-up for us all, it's like a heads-up that's coming. We've had, at our administrative retreat, we had a long discussion, and we began some work today on one of the board's focus for us this year, was school safety. I can tell you that this morning at our Educator Day, we had probably 250 staff members in our initial threat assessment training, which is to how we do threat analysis when we have those situations. So we're off and running with the school safety piece to enhance our performance there. And then today was what we call "We Day" at Westerville Educator Day. All of our teachers and staff members were in training all day long. I sat in a couple ones this morning, as I mentioned, threat assessment I did this morning. My middle-of-the-morning session was meeting with the middle school redesign team that's back at work this year, so I was with them this morning as they were laying out their work and getting their structure set. So you're going to see a lot more activity going on there and broadening the reach out to parents and other folks as we start building on that component. And the third one I went to was an interesting one by a gentleman that Cynthia DeVese bought in, and the topic was discussing working with African-American male students, what we know about the data, about achievement, et cetera, and some of the practices and his perspectives from research about how we can do a better job of reaching that population of students. So all in all, it appears we're ready for the tidal wave. On first two days, all district level administrators are assigned to one of the schools, and we spend the day there just being a helping hand, trying to stay out of the way, but being a helping hand to help with our buildings as they get up and started. So if you have questions about the opening, or things you want to know about, I'm happy to do my best to answer them, but we're ready to go.
Good.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you for that. Moving on to Agenda Item 6.01, I see that we do not have anyone signed up for public comments at this time. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Items 7.01. Can I please have a motion in a second to, for 7.01?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, Ms. Marshall?
So what you have in front of you is, sorry, what you have in front of you is the June 2018 financial report. We are looking at year-to-date receipts, so this was the end of the fiscal year, it's the last month of the fiscal year that ended June 30. Year-to-date receipts were $184,400,000. Year-to-date expenditures were $165,760,000. The unencumbered fund balance, this is the general fund, was $110,431,000. For all funds, year-to-date receipts were $240,351,000. Year-to-date expenditures were $218,476,000. And the unencumbered fund balance, and again, this is for all funds, is $131,833,000.
Any questions or comments? Can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7.02, Resolution to Approve the Purchases in accordance with ORC 5705.41, Section D1, and Board Policy 6320. Can I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Marshall?
So what this is, is Ohio Revised Code and Board Policy require that if we have a invoice that's dated prior to a purchase order date, and it's more than $3,000, then we need board approval in order to pay that. This is a common occurrence, especially with us closing out the fiscal year. There were some purchase orders that got closed out, which prompted some of these things. So in order to pay these, I need your approval for that.
Any questions or comments? Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Items 8.01 through 8.11, can I please have a motion in a second to entertain these as a group?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Hopkins?
President Cotter, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, it's my privilege to provide a few highlights for the Personnel Consent Agenda that's in front of you. With respect to resignations, there are 15 classified resignations. Some of the highlights from the licensed part, we have two teachers that have submitted their resignation. We have one retirement, which is always exciting, all bittersweet to report. Ms. Linda Komlos from Robert Frost, a clerk there, is, will be retiring, so we'd like to congratulate and thank her for her service. A couple of change of assignments in both the classified and licensed area. We have three classified leaves of absences, one in the licensed area. Under one-time payments, again, three for classified, all for maintenance coaches. And under the licensed area, we have four. Some of the highlights there include the blended learning, professional learning that was attended, as well as some visits for our kindergarten program. And then finally, under employment, we have approximately about 20 classified individuals who are presented before you tonight. Under the licensed area, we have eight licensed teachers, or eight licensed staffs, seven of which are teachers, one counselor, and two psychology interns. And as you'll also see, a large number of supplemental positions, which is not unusual for this time of year. So any questions or thoughts?
Can you please call the roll, Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9.01 through 9.03, policy 0100, policy 7530.02, policy 7542, these all look IT-related. Can we entertain these as a group? Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
I think Greg Lewis is here for these particular items, if we have questions?
If you'd like to come up?
This is second reading, correct?
We need a second.
Second.
Yeah, so if there's questions for Greg, he's available.
Go ahead, Ms. Komlos. Oh, it's the second reading, okay. Does anyone have questions on these?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We separated the...
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Hope we see more of that.
Can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10.01, Policy 2460, Regarding Special Education. This is new business. Is there anyone here to cover that?
Yeah, this is actually a pretty simple one. It's just a change in language about where we house our updated policy, and so now it reflects that change in location to our website, which is easier for people to access. So it's a minor tweak in the policy.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.01, Donations. If I can have a motion in a second to approve those, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Just real quickly on that one, I should have said before, but I'll say now, a number of these are folks donating some remaining meal balance. And that's just, that's just a wonderful gift to the schools, to the students, and to families, actually, to families. So we're grateful for all, the donations certainly, I know, and I just wanted to call that one out, a number of them are here, and I assume that's to close out the books this year to start next year, so thank you for those that stepped up. Sorry, I jumped in at that last second.
You're fine. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.02, Resolution to Approve Beverage Proposal Agreement with Pepsi.
I think Carrie Dana says this one.
Can I have a motion in a second for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Marshall and Dr. Kellogg. I'm here to discuss the beverage contract for the district that expired with current provider Pepsi on July 31 of 2018, and propose that we, that you approve the proposal by Pepsi to begin backdate August 1. And it would run five years through July 31 of 2023. We requested proposals from both Coke and Pepsi, as we have done in the past as well. Pepsi was the only one to submit a proposal after asking for some information from us. The anticipated commission revenue is approximately $5,635 annually, and that's based off of current participation in what they see trending now. Or if you take that over the five years, just over $28,000. Cash sponsorship per year of $42,000 to the district, for a total of $210,000 over the course of the five-year contract. And also to include 300 free cases of Pepsi products annually, that has a cash value of $15,150 over the five-year term agreement. And that, those cases go to the buildings, and it's based on enrollment. So that's how we distribute that, and we provide Pepsi with the breakdown from our So the total value of this five-year agreement is $253,325, excuse me. So we ask, I recommend the approval of the contract beginning August 1, 2018. Do you have any questions?
The commission revenue and the sponsorship dollars, can you talk about where those dollars go?
They go to the district to support programs that are, or items that are needed in the past. It has supported, there was a mark, it was a scoreboard at one of the buildings. It's supported different things over time, but that has since changed, and it goes into general fund.
It's general fund dollars now?
Yep.
Yeah, in addition to the general fund, one of the things when, that we did with the last contract that we have, our middle schools and our elementary schools did not receive money with our previous contracts. So with some of those dollars, now we break those up, they go into the principal's account to support programs for kids, and athletic departments.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. We definitely need those dollars at those levels, so I'm really glad to hear that that's happening now. Next question related to the same. So when those dollars go to the schools, become part of the principal's budget, is that in addition to, or do we substitute those dollars for dollars that were allocated to principals as well?
That's in addition to. If it doesn't, when we work with the treasurer to establish budgets for the buildings for the year, this is something that's separate.
Great, that's what I was hoping. Thank you.
The, you asked exactly the question, I turned the microphone on exactly, because these questions, sometimes I will get, and I think we will get questions about, so where does that money go? And so the way I was going to phrase the question was, if somebody did not know anything about this Pepsi contract, what would you say, what would you say, or you say, man, here are two or three things that it really benefits?
These students in the classrooms. The principals use this to support students in the classroom.
Okay.
Above and beyond what they would have done with budgeted funds.
Okay.
Is this not, this goes to a principal's activity account, correct?
Correct.
Which is different than money that's allocated...
It's not general fund money.
Right, so this is, by definition, the activity count has a purpose clause related to students that is separate from the allocations that are per pupil that go to the principal from the general fund to a building account. Those are separate bank accounts.
So these are activity fund dollars then?
These go into an activity fund under the direction of the building principal, which by definition has to benefit students. It is not used to supplement or supplant per-pupil dollars that we allocate to principal from the general fund to support programming in the building. Two different bank accounts, am I right, Ms. Marshall? Okay.
Not two different bank accounts, two different accounts.
Well, yeah. They don't mix.
And I think too, with your question, with the 300 free cases that Carrie was talking about, buildings are able to use those for fundraisers, they're able to use those for class activities and that kind of thing. And over the years, with pay-to-participate fee, that has gone up, and some of the things that we've had to do with the impact on families, the athletic departments have been able to utilize not only the Pepsi dollars, but our Ohio Health dollars, so that our students, we can lessen that impact a little bit, and also, as Carrie said, provide things back to the classroom for kids.
Yeah, I was asking the question, and I think Dr. Nesterbaker probably the same reason, because I just don't think that people know the benefit. I'm going to vote for this, I don't see a reason not to. But I'm not sure we explain the benefits well enough, perhaps. Really, the distinction you just spoke of, I think that's helpful. The fact that it goes, you know, it's making a difference in student lives, and it's allowing the principals to do some things that they otherwise might not do. It's not general funds, it's a separate piece. I just think of all of that, and not everybody will agree, and that's okay, but I just think some of that needs to come out.
You know, it's a good idea, I'm thinking, that we need to talk about this more, because we don't talk about the benefit, and people don't understand it. It might be good, I don't know if they, you know, if it makes any sense, but if we even had a card at the concession stands saying, you know, something about the Pepsi dollars, or something like that, something, a magnet that they let us stick on the vending machines, whatever, that says what these dollars do, the benefit that they bring to us.
Your purchase supports XXX.
Student activities that deal, you know, however we wanted to do it, but some brief explanation.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, because nobody really gets it unless they sit here and watch us talk about it.
We have a limited audience.
Great viewers.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I just think that's important. Thank you for walking us down that path a little bit.
Thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our next Agenda Item, 11.03, Resolution to Approve FY19 Capital Improvement Projects. Mr., oh, can I please have a motion in a second?
Mr. Motion? So moved?
Second.
Mr. Dorn?
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Marshall. Bid Package 4 is for the addition of makeup air units at North High School, and Bid Package 5 is for adding makeup air units at Genoa Middle School. Both projects are per the request of our in-house maintenance department to improve the operating efficiency of our HVAC systems. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code on June 15 and June 18. We received two bids that were publicly read on July 10. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Regal Plumbing and Heating Development as a combination bid for both packages in the amount of $122,105. This is 11% under the engineer's estimate. It is being recommended that the board accept Regal's combination bid as presented to be funded as part of our fiscal year 19 capital improvement plan.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Item 11.04, Resolution to Approve the FY19 Transportation Routes. Can I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Ohio Administrative Code requires annual board approval of all bus stops with scheduled times. In FY18, we ended bus routes with 99, and we served 34 locations. This year, we're going to start with 99 bus routes with 34 locations. We're very, very excited, as Dr. Kellogg mentioned, we're going to start the My Van Program, and this is for students with specialized transportation in their IEPs. We have a total of 19 van routes, and will be serving our schools. On August 7, bus information was made available through Power School for parents to review their students' bus information. Currently, we have over 12,000 students assigned to bus routes, and it's recommended the board approves the bus routes and the van routes for this year. Any questions?
I have a question. I just want to thank you and everyone in the Transportation Department. This is a very hectic time. Every year, it's, I don't know how you pull it off every year, but what I'm thanking you for is not just that remarkable success every year, but the kindness that you show to people who contact you. And I've talked to a number of people over the last few months who've reached out to transportation for one reason or another, and invariably, they tell me how much they appreciate the way they were treated. Even when it couldn't, something couldn't be done the way they wanted, or whatever, they comment that they were treated very well. So I wanted to thank you and everybody in Transportation.
You're so welcome.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, well, thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Item 11.05, can I please have a motion in a second regarding the AEP lease?
So moved.
Second.
I was waiting for somebody down there, and it wasn't there.
Mr. Dorn?
Tonight, you have a recommendation to approve an easement and right-of-way agreement with the Ohio Power Company, a unit of AEP. Granting this request will allow AEP to move and replace the riser poles currently along Old 3C slightly to the west to make up room for the road improvements as part of the Delaware County project that was previously brought to the board's attention. Agents from EASY, representing AEP and not Delaware County, have negotiated with the district to obtain the easement and right-of-way for approximately 0.23 acres, partially in front of both Genoa Middle School and Faust Elementary School. Granting the easement allows for the continuation of the improvements on Old 3C in a timely manner. The distribution service for Genoa and Faust is fed by an underground line off of the pole along Freeman Road to the north of the district's parcel. Therefore, there will be no planned service disruptions, as AEP will not have to switch out the service feed or the riser pole from which our service is delivered. However, as with any construction project, plans could be subject to change, and it is possible that there could be an outage, but any outage that would happen as part of AEP's work would be coordinated with the district in advance to not affect school business. AEP plans to begin construction somewhere from mid-September to early October, and should be completed by the end of the year. As part of the agreement, AEP has agreed to a one-time payment of $8,625 for granting the easement and right-of-way for the 0.23 acres. Additionally, AEP will provide compensation for legal fees associated with the execution of the agreement, as well as any reasonable attorney fees that result in successful actions against AEP as related to the easement. It is recommended to the board to approve and execute the easement and right-of-way presented this evening.
Any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Marshall, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12.01, we do have somebody signed up for public comments tonight. So, let's see. Carly Mitchell? I wasn't sure if I was pronouncing it correctly. Okay.
Just like Carly Simon.
Okay.
Hello, all. Again, my name is Carly Mitchell, and I have children going into the fourth grade at Emerson and the first grade at Robert Frost here in Westerville. And as we get ready to embark on another school year, I am here with a question about school safety. In the wake of the Parkland school shooting this February, there's been a lot of discussion about how to make our schools safer, and I know that Westerville has been really proactive in that, and you've been looking at our preparedness in terms of the Go Bucket Project that I know you did, our emergency response plans, facilities, mental health support, all those sorts of things. However, conversations at the national and state level have also included discussions about arming teachers. And I came today first to find out if Westerville had an official position on that, and I apologize if I missed it, it's totally possible, and second, to speak out against arming teachers if that is something that you are considering. There's no evidence that arming teachers will make schools safer. There's a substantial body of research that having guns in the home increases risks around homicide and suicide and kids dying in accidental shootings. And I think we have lots of reasons to believe those statistics might extend to schools as well. And I would be deeply uneasy to send my kids to a classroom where there was a firearm. We have been so impressed with the teachers and classrooms we've experienced here at Westerville, and I would hate to ask our teachers to worry about keeping a gun secure, about being effective armed security when trained professionals have struggled to do so. We want them to focus on teaching and providing care and compassion in the classroom. So again, I know that Westerville has been thinking really holistically about school safety planning, and I thank you for that, and I hope that arming teachers is not a part of our immediate plans. And that's it.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13.01, Board Comments.
No, we're not talking about arming teachers. That has not been something that we have agreed as a board that we want to do at all. agreed as a board that we want to do at all. That is not something that we're looking at doing here in this particular district. Other districts can make their own choices about that, and I appreciate that we all have the right to make those choices. That's not the direction we're going. And you did mention that we have a holistic approach, and I very much appreciate your understanding of what that involves. I am very pleased with the direction the district's going and the work that's been done in past years around school safety and the discussion points going forward about things that can be done to increase safety. We all know that there is no perfect safety plan, because no one exists in a bubble. And we all know that as much as we try, we cannot block up all the windows and, you know, shut our children inside and our teachers inside and never let them out again. But what we can do is take really important, strong, well-thought-out, well-connected steps to do whatever we possibly can to ensure our kids and our staff and our parents in the buildings are safe. And that's what we're working toward. It matters to all of us, just as it matters to you.
Mr. Valarda?
Affirming all of that. The only comment I'd make is a lot of, just speaking for myself, just really a lot of hopes and prayers going into this new year for all the staff, all the teachers, everybody behind the scenes, and obviously for the students as well. Just excited to get it started. I am. My two sons are not. Just excited to get it started and just to have a wonderful, wonderful blessed year.
Hey, Dr. Kellogg, why didn't you ask me to come be at a building all day and make sure nothing bad goes on and help out on back-to-school day? Huh, huh, huh?
We figured you'd be busy with grandchildren and other assorted responsibilities, so we assume you're on the outside keeping things going.
Back-to-school is the best time. I love back-to-school. It feels almost like Christmas sometimes. It's just so exciting, and not just because they all go back to school, but just because it is so much fun, there's so much energy, and it is a delightful example of what this community does really well in taking care of our kids and in bringing everybody together. It's so much fun. So yeah, you'll see me out and about.
I would invite any board member who'd like to participate in opening day, feel free, stop by school, you know, they'll love to have you, help people get off the bus, help them open their milk containers. You know, there's all kinds of great tasks that you can help with, but, you know, I know you're busy people too, so.
It is a lot of fun. I was telling Dr. Kellogg before the meeting started that I had a seventh-grade grandson, a fifth-grade granddaughter, a second-grade grandson, and a kindergarten grandson, and I intend to stop by each one of those buildings just to say hi, and I'm so excited. I really do like back-to-school.
Any other comments? Yes, so I think we have a great team in the district, and I'm really excited about the back-to-school time of year as well. And I also want to reassure you that arming teachers is not a direction that we're contemplating for our school safety, although we are continuing to look at ways we can improve that as we move forward in some holistic ways too, like wellness and behavioral stuff, things like that. So that's the approach the district is taking. Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14.01. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, August 27th, and Monday, September 10th at 6:00 PM at the Early Learning Center here on 936 East Wind Drive. And then Agenda Item 15.01, can I have a motion in a second for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Valarda?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting.